We get. All right. Much love, whoever that's our free leader. First thing on our agenda, there will be minutes for anybody who doesn't think. If we can track them with that. Well, first I don't want to argue that some of the other stuff that they've been approved or fixed, but I'm saying please. This is a big, you know, these guys. Ken.
Hello, this is kind of nineteen lots that have well. Um, just sort of times that we do, the big things, we develop penal government. The tax. Uh, law spirit. I was thinking as part of the development agreement amendment where they were not on the section one hundred seventy five unit. Between the unit, they are providing some of the ones. What is proposed to be the available unit? Well, let's kind of make it up for the few of them. Now, the ones that we don't want to see is the same as what we're going to send us back. Uh, you know, island for that. To meet the requirement. Uh, so long as they came up with this way to find out. They want to look at the, looking at the, looking at the level of the class. So that, but you know, it's still new. Kind of how they're working to integrate these with this, because I know how it was established in. And maybe similar to the civil area, but it's pretty much, it's pretty much. Yeah, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
This is like when you call out that.
Yeah.
The buyer is. Look, that they remember. So the two hundred and seventy five additional, and this is like why we don't want it on the flash, because if they don't build it, they don't get the size.
Well, yeah, right, yeah. We're only going to build it if we sell it, or in some cases if I'm not, so they don't get that, it's something that needs to be done.
So we're, we're going to draw, like, first of all, um, the three and five side, we tell you that. Um, and maybe, you know, it's, it's under the width, that's twenty three, twenty three. Little confidence that they're out there, uh, the women is, is out there. It's just about four hundred people now. Um, yeah, and so first of all, uh, like we got them locked down, they're always supposed to be decided by the state. So there's, up here in Southbound, that was ours. I, I don't, I'm not giving it. I think, hey, God, really, I knew you, of all people you would ask, so. I know, I, I completely get that, really. I know, I know one of them, um, has worked for us. And, um, perhaps there's, I think he got to use workers. And so they're getting to do this, and that's what I'm here for.
Find the whole way.
Go ahead.
Yes. So they have a forty thousand dollars, state provides forty thousand dollars, they don't need to put their first town home there. But I think the end of them are actually different, right? And that's one of the four weeks that was, uh, 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 that. So other than that, which is like essentially, um, if, uh, if alone, it's not, it's really hard for them to sell behind. So they provide that down payment assistance, and then you have to go, you still have to give that back with me, and you sell it, right? Then you have to put a small amount of reason. Uh, other than that, though, uh, there is no special, you know, this is, one of the calls that we're here because.
So here's, um, stuff that I can't think through this game, so just from the goal, this can, if I try and help with the box.
That is right. That is what I'm saying, that is what I'm saying. So. One thing that would. Pointed out. But I'm a little bit riding super, that's why. Well, I think, you know, I, you know, I think that's what I was, kind of frustrated me a little bit. Was. We were trying to solve this, 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 not all in one area. Well, final, final language in development agreement says that they can put. No more than eighty percent. Of the village. Please contain the, the, the. Right? So, thanks, but they can put in one area, they can put eighty percent of these. In that, like, not one year. So Brian, you know, still has.
Henry thought, Henry, when he said, Henry, Henry wrote it, saying, this is just, um, they use. It's that jacket given, showing everything inside, everything that's following you. And then it threw little things we got there as well, I didn't expect, we, we, we did it off. But it showed with Henry, the here, what's the same we provided. It shows that essentially, um. Well, they show them all the villages. Sorry, it's not, okay, cool, thanks. But show them all the villages, um, and we showed all the started homes. So bring it exactly right. The mass, the mass part of this is kind of, it's kind of simple, so I guess there's two perspectives, and I don't want to be causing this to be made in such a way that. We brought in the exhibit, because we did know exactly what was going to be proposed. Uh, we brought in the exhibit, and showed you that on that, which is kind of, they give it new legal with democracy. And so the concept was, we're legally starting homes with market economy. And so we spent a good, a good amount of time, and this guy should line up exactly what Henry had on the screen, and just give you a little larger success rate of showing everything all together. Um, and so, yeah, there's, the mass exists, right, you've got a thousand units of trees. And if we get all of your tax products, none of those involve by to the starter home, so that takes out four hundred, because we have two hundred of the tax family. There's only, uh, two hundred of that family, twenty four. So by the time you take those out, there are about six hundred left, and on those six hundred, two hundred and seventy five can be used by them. So the math is a six hundred fifty to be had. So at, at a bay fine homes, you have to play at least fifty percent of those starter homes in, as, so fifty percent of all of the people that are in the home, they'll be, like, ten. And so then when you take out, like, if you work the math, you know, just give you, like, over on the right, inside of that home area. So there's a couple of areas that have a little larger lot. Again, Henry, Henry counted up here as well. These areas right here have a little larger lot, so none of these will qualify as starter homes. So when you take those out, there will be pockets that have, you know, sixty, seventy percent potentially, up to eighty percent of what was about losing in the past. And then the other thing that I particularly wanted to point out is the graphic over on the side that Henry had, and we took these numbers. And we actually added a little bit more information. So if you look at that on the right-hand side, it shows that the northeast village. So that northeast village is at sixty percent. So that's just that small part of the northern village, that's right. So we haven't submitted for the entire northeast village. That percentage looks, and maybe screams, uh, uh, yeah, whether lots of that, in that northeast village. The east central village, that one comes up to about, I think that one was about forty five percent, yeah. Forty five percent of those homes are starter homes, so that's also quite a simple piece. And then if you look at the southeast village, on the southeast village, that one's completely tied out, and not on the east, because we only have those twelve starter homes in the east. Well, they're looking at last, last year, or a couple of years ago. And then the southeast village is zero percent, because those are all attached to the, to the south village. The south village is here, so there's some of these things that will have zero starting, and buying guns. And that means to buy people off, there's others, others in the lot outside of the one that is, that's, that's. So, but, but, and we feel like we, we spent, uh, um, a lot of time thinking about how to plan the, the range of, of. Making sure that the starter homes make, make sense. And if you go up there and see those homes, I don't think you're going to walk up to one of them and say, wow, this is clearly a starter home. Our, our objective was to build them and integrate them, so that you really can't tell. Obviously, the person who buys it knows that they got, you know, a, a cheaper home, a less expensive home, I should say, uh, but then we'll also have. Much expensive, thank you, yes. But then we'll also have, you know, four, five, six hundred thousand dollar homes just like this one. And so again, I am proud of the thing before you, that we're doing this in a twenty five, and spend a lot of time thinking about, let's make sure that this is mine. Even close to this.
The way you've been showing this, yesterday, this, uh, this.
But, but, right now, that's not really what I have. I appreciate you, because you're like this, yeah.
All right, thanks, Brad. Anything else on this item?
A couple of things I wanted to split, if any, to make sure that we're talking, is we have each application being. We're tracking a number of units, we're tracking a number of the same ones, we're tracking open space. For example, both the old unit, we missed the case, that the transit line is not there. Along the eastern boundary, you know. One of the installed divisions has been locked to them, that's for the development of the unit. That's been, how many have, open space anywhere. But, um, the other thing, some of the, I don't know what I'm doing, just, keep it. The public park, so I think. Fourty six hundred north. Um, would be completed before a total of a hundred building permits, but they're considering the, 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 I just said, it was up now, we've got thirty eight. Um, building permit applications, just for the, for the, for the, as the developers so far, so they'll be keeping track of those.
We got, yeah.
I don't know if I have an individual experience.
Yeah, so, and there's, it's, uh, other than the playground. And a little bit of my idea of the, of the, of the, so I don't, I don't know if you.
Graphic, you know, we're going to have to back ground break to go, the graphic will all grow, and then.
And I've pointed it out mostly so that you are aware that we are continuing to work in that old unit, I can expect that the next application is permanent, to make sure that you don't have anything that's been lifted out of the site. Other than that, they've got their, talk to the government, whether it's the power lines, stuff in there, and so they do yours. Um, any, a couple of things that you do need to discuss on this one, so. So first of all, we want to make sure that the road staff section to base survivors. Um, that's with the development agreement, I need to condition of the two of those, not to lose finance. Uh, the other thing is that, once you're on. You can hear, the O C C board has not been signed yet. It is certainly not a version, before they get to sign on, they definitely have an aspect, a dedicated aspect of it. So they look at that, hopefully they go to final, whether it's through, um, the O C C board, or whether it's, whether it went along the southern boundary. Uh, this, or it's another one, so that is one of the, that's what you're getting, but so they don't start up either. I don't want to say how about this, but you have a soft thing about it? Is Brian not hearing any answers for this?
No, I have nothing. All, all the family, and, and, I don't.
All right, our next item is going to be a. Request, it'll be a public hearing, a request for a rezone. Uh, forty eight, and over, Mark, New Family Trust. Property. See the quick stuff for.
Yeah, so this one is located, uh, for fourteen hundred stock, and it's roughly, uh, forty, forty zero, it's the, uh. Looking a lot of things, it's, it's, it's entirely forty, it's a part of the, of, of our one fifteen, for that, that's the, uh, selling. But, uh. So they, they've got a concept of plans, you know, they, that has to be, if you take a couple of miners. Uh. Question, Ed, that, that would be, that would be a deal, and, uh. He's not set up for, I think it's going to be family. Uh, there's also, uh. Similar to many things that, that that has towards, uh, monitors how the, they, 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 if, 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 uh, lost, or, uh, monitors, you know, how they, I put that in there. The, 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 the.
I, you know, I, I could elaborate a little bit on. Where, where none of these, I know we typed that into some in the past, type like, account ones and stuff like that, but we're, these are all. That third acre designation, these kind of things, I guess, where does that come from?
Well, what is, what is things on, is these, uh, staff line, you accomplish, just told to make a plan. And just doing things, just to develop, so he's also, he's also just, he's skilled, he's got to say, he's like, he's like, he's Jack, Jack. And so I think that's kind of doing this, you know, the rest of the, of the, of the, you know, a little bit more, uh, just, you know, exactly, but, you know, it's maybe required. So I think that's, that's, that's. Or, or, or. So, that has, proposed, uh, several regulations in, uh, in the, in the, for, for, and, and. And you've also seen this with staff employees, they're starting with women. And, and that's something, because, because you want to be sound, probably. But, but that, right, right. I don't want to touch on this.
Will leave out that probably something it doesn't need to be done with that will want to decide.
Why?
Clean space, but if that's not their future, they're not signing on to keep it in the same space then yeah, I think.
So they're some kind of.
So they're not.
Fun and I think once you start bringing all you have to ground it if it's something else. I feel fine.
Okay. So it's totally not a company, so why is that we have something.
We.
It's not a.
Hard.
It's not really, okay, that's.
That's. I don't.
Okay, so it's.
Well, it's not.
Okay, it's not, it's not going to be an.
Right. It's not gonna be.
Okay.
So.
It's it, it is nice that if they don't develop that part and they develop the rest of it, I mean, maybe, I don't know if it's something they remember to say that becomes our plan when they're done, you know, because. It allows for them to go in despite a smaller lot, which is going to be more important, but that's only the things that I like.
And and knowing that is saying about, you know, I might add that is just the point is that type of course to itself. I'm not necessarily telling them, thinking, you know, seeing how they tell them that most of it. Uh, you know, a lot. It. Someone somewhat substantial, he he does in fact, the whole cell, I think it's one acre to begin with, you know, the the couple acres has had had the higher there before. I think the town has been not necessarily telling us what you know, you know, uh, and. I I think the vast percentage of this is that probably maybe that will be that 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 was sort of, you know, as. But.
So I can't spend the time to do this, if if one of them is doing it, if they want to build, you get a bad landing and must put it out or the.
That's right. I I don't want to make it before.
Because we couldn't unite for a very long time if someone else goes, oh, that's a good success, that's a buy their land and you give it to the top guy.
It's not really because we're top of the.
I feel, but you know, it's not me, I have that in mind.
I mean, they're waiting for anybody, well, that's the thing, they're taking it anyway, right?
Yeah.
So they don't have the ability to do it. So, yeah, I would. I still don't have to like to something I still want to do on these people, you know, it's my right to. It's all. All the same way, uh, I I do kind of go along, but it's not the people, but I think that's all that's. All that, but, you know, it would be one of the things that makes things about because it's. It's a good, it's something for the. So, uh, pretty.
They have to buy this, they have to buy the R and stuff, they have to be along with my G O N.
I know, I'd be doing still that for. Or. That I think that if we do open money, you already know how to kill that stuff. I think they now have further requirements to get more. Uh, I know, I know, I know, maybe you're still popping, you know, this proposal, a lot is at a hundred percent. And then that way, when we stop that, we will start to.
Yeah.
How many that do you have?
The one man has a central phone that's on, you know, with where people are going to the lot, but.
No, but at least, at least if nothing else, it's just all this is plain as water.
Oh, that's what you did.
Well, we see that very, because we kind of call here, so that's relation on there is the stuff I wanted earlier. So if they're back there, into us, just keep to develop that, but I like that.
Okay.
We just keep that for one time. With that, they have to, but we didn't get to be able to do that.
I think that's.
But I think it's all the figure of all, uh, the remaining stuff over the top of the. And then the other street, right, but I don't think you know, but I'm gonna start on that one. When we get in there, fourteen hundred is a whole, which maybe just three two times. And you try to mitigate that, and when you get to the, 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 tell me what, well, they were able to skirt the requirement, which they took that type of act. And finally, we'll do, and they were both alive and supported and things like that, they knew by that, they bought that from the school and brought it out. But my concern is that we own another hundred and ten lots, we're gonna have a thousand trips to that road, which may be just three two times. And so. The only way I'm gonna support the initiative, we put a requirement on the site that they have to do some sort of improvement, fourteen hundred all the way to thirty five hundred way. For that road, that we, right now, you can't ever test, you talk to that, that's going. We, we, uh, we don't. You do that, you don't. I'm gonna get kind of a reason. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's not more than their property, right? But if it is, if you're gonna go and open it up, that's that's what they didn't have, I mean, they're. Oh. Yeah, this is pretty bad to add.
Do you want to try the road instead of trying to?
No, I think it's guilty to be the part of. But. Nobody would have this. And that, that's kind of my base of thought, you know, there are, they just, I wouldn't see a problem if they went for four thousand, I think it's thirty days. So if they're gonna put a hundred and ten, I feel like it's a way to.
Well, I'm gonna keep going.
You know, we, 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 we order the response, they got thirty, so what, that's in the plan, tell me. Well, actually, they put that other actual inside that I wrote the law, so if these guys can't, I know. Well, I don't, I thought. I don't, but I, I'm not gonna, I'll be right on, I'm not gonna support the removal of that package for a row.
How, and how about?
I talked to, I mean, here's the thing, just that I wanted to do with everyone, and. Yeah, thank you, sir. How far is, what is reckoned with well? He didn't know, he didn't, I mean, that, you know, all for sure, what I expect when we put it there, and we put it in my. They improve it, we want to tell you, there's time to fit, so I just want to be in Congress. And let him, Julian God Herman, let me pretty, um, personally, the real face of the ranchers today. Did you write that down, Eric?
No, it's just like certainly, whatever, it can be tied to, you know, I'm down, that is.
Like, that's, 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 that's. We're coming back in here, right?
Yep. I mean, maybe one thing, and hopefully to everything we should have connected, we're gonna have this.
Kind of weird, I mean. You're on.
That's it, okay, I don't know, I don't believe that. What else?
Don't think we get it, but then. Someone, someone. Anybody live in their seats? We were the first ones in there. That. Well, that's. That's been for years. No, here's.
Well. Right?
It's fine. Just running. No.
Oh.
It's not recording in here for some reason, give me just a sec, please.
Okay.
Over there, just.
We've got some technical difficulties on our recording, so we'll get started as soon as we get it figured out, so apologize for the delay.
It's, it's not so many of them, that's.
The.
Well, yeah, that's. No, it wasn't. Run here, run there. They're in those ways. Well.
All right, we got her fixed, so we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Western Weaver Planning Commission to order, today is Tuesday, December tenth. Um, we're gonna go ahead and. Excuse Commissioner Neville, Commissioner Clont and Commissioner Andrea Audi from tonight's meeting there, they were unable to attend. Um, we're gonna start off with a pledge of allegiance, if y'all wouldn't mind standing, repeating the pledge with me. Thank you for that. Our first item on today's agenda is gonna be, uh, approval of our minutes from our August thirteenth meeting. Any comments or concerns with the minutes? I didn't notice anything. If you guys are good, I'll, ready for a motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from, uh, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Got a motion, do I got a second?
Yeah.
Motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. All right, first item on our agenda is an administrative item, this is L V C zero seven one eight two four, consideration and action on a request of preliminary approval of. Creekside at J D C Ranch subdivision consisting of a hundred and nineteen lots, Director Grover?
Thank you, Chair, and members of the planning commission. Um, as administrative item, you're gonna be reviewing this under our current land use code, you'll be deciding if it's meeting or not meeting the code. Um, on these type of items where it's administrative, we typically don't take public comment because it's either meeting the code or it's not. Um, when we get to the next ones, um, we'll talk about public comment, and Miss Ada Loth will be presenting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, good evening, Commissioners, so just to orient you a little bit as to where this project is located, we're up at the very northern area of the county, up at twenty seven, twenty six hundred north here. Project area is located right about here, and I've got a presentation here that I'll share with you. Okay. This, uh, name of this development is Creekside at J D C Ranch, it is located on twenty seven acres and it straddles a few zones, as you can see here. Um, located in the R one twelve, R two and R three zones, there is a development agreement tied to this. Applicant is proposing a hundred and nineteen single family detached units in this development through eight phases. Public right of ways, pathways throughout, couple of open space pieces that will be dedicated to the county but maintained by their H O A. This is an overlay of what this looks like, um, this development is divided up into kind of village areas, and so you can see where these lie so far. Um, the southeast village consists of the orchards, phases one through four, we are, uh, in the process of going through final approval with phase four, but haven't yet recorded. Creekside is located in the northeast villages and in east central villages. Uh, part of our subdivision application requirements, uh, entail feasibility or capacity assessment letters for water and sewer services. Bonavista Water, Weber Box Elder Conservation District and Central Weber Sewer have all provided that information specific to this development. Um, if you recall, the development agreement went through an amendment earlier this year to allow for some additional density. Only as attainable lots, however, so the additional density doesn't come unless these actually sell as attainable housing units. One of the, um, discussion points and one of the, uh, conditions of approval was that these are intermingled or interspersed throughout the development, so we don't have just a pocket. Of two or three hundred of these small attainable homes, and so I wanted to show you what this looks like in the Creekside development. The applicant is proposing fifty three attainable units, now, if these don't sell as attainable units, they'll be regular single family dwelling units at market rate, but this is what they look like. Um, one of the things that we require of the developer is to, um, give us a development report, and it consists of the number of units that we track throughout the development, so they don't go over. We also are tracking the maximum percentage of these attainable units, so their development agreement states that they cannot. Um, have a village area, let me go back to what those look like, they cannot have a village area consist of more than eighty percent of attainable units. So these will be spread out throughout, the majority of them will likely be located in this area here, we've got twelve in the southeast village, and then another fifty three in this development. A couple of things to make note of, this one is pretty straightforward, actually, there's nothing in this proposal that conflicts with the development agreement, with their open space plan, with their concept plans in there. Um, there are a couple of, let me go back to this here, they've got some paved pathways that are required throughout, six foot wide paved pathways will be located on either side of all the right of ways. And there's a ten foot paved pathway along the eastern boundary that will be installed in phases as this particular development, um, goes through the plating process. Uh, the other thing that we're looking at are, is this, um, as part of the development agreement, we're looking at. The installation of public improvements and of parks and open spaces, and this park here, from my understanding with the developer who's here today, you're welcome to have him address this more specifically, but. The development agreement states that prior to issuing one hundred building, um, permits, that this park will be installed and improved. Per the development agreement. And finally, um, located in all three of those zones, actually, these are our, the staff rec would recommend approval of this based upon it meeting. The ordinance as well as the conditions outlined in the development agreement and subject to the conditions here, based on the findings outlined in the staff report. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Any questions for the developer?
Just on so that it's on the record, um, could you tell us where you're at in the pro, in the progress of that part, please?
Great question, Brian Bayless, um, the, um, the park, all of the grass has been installed, there's sidewalks throughout. Um, and then there are several pavilions that still need to be installed, um, so the sidewalk is in, there's outside of the sidewalk, once we get, um, a little further on the homes that are around it, there's some. Planters that have to be installed, and then the playground equipment needs to be, needs to be installed as well, but everything else has been, so the parking lot, sidewalks, all of the grass, trees. Um, so it's just some planter beds, uh, pavilions, and then the playground, so that's kind of where things stand right now.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm ready for a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval of, uh, preliminary subdivision at Creekside at J D C Ranch subdivision consisting of one hundred and nineteen units. Per the staff report, um. Planning recommendation. Um. I'll read that, the planning division recommends preliminary approval of Creekside at J D C Ranch, phase one. Through eight, located at twenty eight fifty west, twenty six hundred north, consisting of one hundred and nineteen single family lots, this recommendation for approval. Is subject to all review agency requirements and based on the following conditions, one, final letters of approval should be submitted from the culinary and secondary water providers prior to recording the final plat. Two, dual ingress egress needs to be provided, shown on the final plat to the existing public street that is not temporarily. Terminal before any final plaits can be considered, three, open spaces will need to be properly labeled as common area with appropriate dedication language on each final plat. Four. Excuse me. Street cross sections will be verified for compliance with the development agreement once final improvement drawings are submitted for each phase, this recommendation is based on the following findings, one. The proposed subdivision conforms to the Western Weaver County General Plan, two, the proposed subdivision complies with applicable Weber, or Weber County ordinances and development, and the development agreement.
All right, got a motion, do I got a second?
Yeah, I got.
Got a motion, a second, uh, any discussion? Commissioner Wickern.
Aye.
Commissioner Faverell.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Chair, but I as well, that passes.
Thank you, thank you, Tammy. Next item's gonna be a legislative item, this is item one point one, file Z M A two zero two four dash one four, this will be a public hearing on an application to rezone approximately forty acres. Of land generally known as the Martini Family Trust Land, located approximately forty eighty three west, fourteen hundred south. From the A one zone to the R one fifteen zone. Director Grover?
Thank you, Chair, um, on this item, you are gonna be making a recommendation to the legislative body, which would be the county commission. Um, you will take public comment, you'll need to open and close the public hearing with a motion and close that, um, with a motion as well. And you should probably keep a limit on how long public comment should be taken, and Mr. Yalvarino will be presenting.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners, uh, we have a pro- proposal, uh, for you to, uh, change the zoning, so this is a legislative item that does. Allow some public comment there, I did send out notices to the public within the five hundred foot radius of this project area. And it looks like we have some folks from Western River area, uh, ready to participate, which is a good thing, uh, we have, uh, this development which is located in, uh, roughly, um. The fourteen hundred south and four zero eight three west, you can see this arrow area map I have up on the, on the screen, kind of shows the, uh, the existing land use for the most part, the. Um, this development that's already, uh, existing and established to the south, that's the, the Giorgio, uh, subdivision. Some of the things that we'll walk through these, uh, through these slides is, you know, uh, um, design criteria related to this development. Uh, regards to the, uh, roads and pathway connections and, uh, the, the local streets within the area, including fourteen hundred south. Uh, traffic circulation patterns and also the, uh, the development agreement that's included with your packet. And going on to the next page, you can see that this is a, um, a connectivity plan that is required for all rezones, and it helps to kind of give a clear picture of. Um, what the general plan recommends as far as, uh, roads and, um, also. It also takes into consideration the neighboring developments, uh, you can see this development that's kind of grayed out, it's just directly to the west, and that's called out semi acres. You can see that this, this plan that they've proposed, uh, does show some connections in through there, as well as a, a pathway heading straight along sixteen hundred south street. Those connections to Giorgio and as well as two outlets to the north onto fourteen hundred south street. And, uh, the way that this is also designed, I'd like to point out that, uh, the being that fourteen hundred south is a, considered a minor collector street, we're trying to limit the number of access and driveways off of this, and so. Um, what the developer has designed is, is a way to, uh, for each of these lots would actually access these through the interior. And, and so fourteen hundred south, uh, would not see driveways, in fact, there would be some needed improvements along this, uh, project area along fourteen hundred south, including, yeah, um. Uh, a, a block wall or some type of fence, and that's included, uh, some examples of what type of block walls would be acceptable, is included in exhibit F of the report. Um, looking at the, um, just taking a look at also the, the local, uh, facilities that are already in place, this, this development will be connected to Central Weber Sewer. It will have the connection to the Taylor West Weaver Water Culinary District, and it will have the, uh, upper irrigation pressurized water for this. Um, there is a, uh, you can see there, it's labeled as future school grounds, uh, this has been pretty close proximity to some, uh, public areas, including a public school, a church. Um, and, uh, elementary school and a high school to the, to the north and south, and you also have, um, a lot of this traffic we anticipate would. Uh, from this development would go directly onto fourteen hundred south, um, and likely head in the east west direction, and then, then hooking up with the, uh. The twelfth street and then heading west into the city. Um, and so. Let's see here. We'll go through to the next slide, and here you can see the, the concept plan that was submitted, and so there. Uh, you can see that what, what they've designed here would be, uh, kind of the unique feature with this development is that there's that, uh, mid block crossing, it's a pathway. Uh, going straight through, um, as well as the. If you'll notice on the northwest corner of this development, there's a two acre lot that's reserved for the Martinis, I, I believe they, they reside there, and they would like to keep this, this land as. Um, as is, and it, with the ability to, uh, pursue some, uh, agricultural, uh, pursuits within the A one zone. Um, and so that, that stipulation has been written into the development agreement to allow for this entire parcel to be rezoned. Um, and then with the Martini two acre piece, they could, um, they could still pursue some agriculture uses if they desire. And, um, going on to the next slide is, this is taken from the, uh, Western Weaver General Plan Future Land Use Map. And the future land use map, it's a little bit busy, but it does contain a great deal of information that is helpful in, in planning, uh, future streets. As well as pathways, open spaces and schools and parks and things like that, um, you can see this, the, the red, uh, square is the, um, the Brookview. Um, rezone proposal. Uh, which is slated for medium to large lot residential and, um, the R one fifteen zone, so the general plan does support a, a rezone of this nature. And moving on to the, the staff's recommendations, and so, um, there are some, some conditions that, that are within the, the development agreement. Hence that first comment where it mentions the development agreement standards are included with, with, with staff's recommendation for approval. Um, but we also have, um, some additional, uh, things that, that are specific to this development, so as, as far as, uh, item number two. Um, the, the concept plan will, um, address staff's recommendations for those minor edits to sufficiently meet the connectivity. Um, section of code, uh, the developer will also like, uh, is also willing to communicate with the Weber Housing Authority. Uh, in order to set aside, um, a certain percentage of housing to affordable or attainable housing. And that, that's something that staff recommends simply because, um, the goals that we have set in the Western Weaver General Plan would be to have a wider mix of housing types. Uh, uh, available to, um, to different walks of life, and so, uh, and then item number four is that. Um, the lots, the lots that are within the Brookview Development, ones that have at least forty thousand square foot, they, they could still pursue some agriculture uses that are listed in the A one zone. And then the, uh, of course, Weber County Outdoor Lighting Code, that's part of the smart growth requirements, and this just helps to minimize the. And this just helps to minimize the impacts of 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 more development, more houses, more lights. I think the the rural nature could be preserved in that regard as far as light pollution and so um make it less of an impact. There there is an additional topic that was that was discussed um during our pre-meeting and it was the concern over the fourteen hundred South Street. Um, and so the 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 fourteen hundred South Street um existing is. I I I wouldn't say it's substandard, but uh in order to to facilitate this this amount of traffic flow. Um, it's it's it was wisely brought up by the Planning Commission that there should be some improvements made to that road. And um the entire length heading westward to thirty-five hundred west. And so going back to the slide where we can see that the point where I've actually taken some measurements. So fourteen hundred South Street from this location heading straight west is roughly half half a mile. Um, and so there are needed some needed improvements for that half a mile segment. And then also from this development heading straight east to forty-five hundred West Street is um, you know, roughly thou- a thousand feet. And so it as a as a means to uh capture some needed improvements on fourteen hundred south. Um, there there is an option for the Planning Commission to make an additional recommendation or an additional condition. That um there 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 be some some widening done to fourteen hundred South Street. Um, for that that half mile distance. Um, and in doing so, there would be some coordination with the um the county engineer. Um, to to find out exactly how much is is appropriate for for that road widening. And that really concludes what I had to say. Any questions?
Thanks Felix, and I appreciate you bringing up that concern on fourteen hundred south. Could you ask if something's not done to? Widen that road. I I'm a no vote on this. That road's too narrow to accommodate all this growth and traffic on there. So. Um, Commissioner, any other comments or questions for staff before we go into the public hearing?
I I just have a concern on on the A-one zone. Um, while we're going through this process. Uh, I feel strongly that that we we change the zoning for the whole parcel, not uh less the two acres or. Or whatever the proposed amount is. Um, just so that it is standard and there's no lack of or any extra expectation for that two acre.
And and just a question, how many units are they proposing?
So this proposal, it would maximize the density. I would just assume the forty acres. You could go as as high as one hundred and sixteen, which is the max. And so that that kind of alludes to what we discussed in the in the pre-meeting where, you know, in in an effort to allow the Martinis to. Develop that two acre parcel if they desire in some future point. Um, maybe we say uh this development is allowed one hundred and ten lots. Um, and then that way the the additional uh density could be utilized at some future date by the Martinis.
No, I agree with your concern there.
Uh, I have a question. When you say that the road should be developed, does he need to go east?
Uh, my opinion is it needs to go to the east because I would guess.
Go west.
Most of that traffic is gonna head to the east to thirty-five hundred.
I'm just curious if you're talking about the whole road or just that portion going towards the east.
My feelings was I want to see it widen going to the east. The previous subdivision should have done to the west. I don't know where that's at, but if from this development going to the east out to that. Is that an artillery artillery or what is it Felix?
Artorial, yeah.
There you go.
It is, yeah.
At least out to that.
The fourteen hundred south minor collector. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then I'm ready for a motion to open a public hearing on the item.
I'll make a motion to uh open a public hearing.
Got a motion. We've got a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, we're now in a public hearing. If you wouldn't mind coming up and stating your name and where you're from. And like Director Grover said, if you could limit your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Randy Ropelado, I live at thirty-nine fifty-four west, fourteen hundred south. I just got four things. I was wondering how the uh future corridor. Has now been changed from what the commissioners approved on the master plan two years ago. And uh as far as widening the road outside of this project, who's gonna pay for that? And then uh somewhere along the line, somebody approved allowing two different curb and gutters out there. And uh I'm not talking about inside the subdivisions. But outside the subdivisions on main roads, they should be a standard curb and gutter. And I don't know whose idea that was to allow two different style curvings throughout the. The county, but it's actually stupid. And then uh. I don't know who's planning to do this development as far as the excavator. Uh, but we're not gonna put up with what the NJ did down on the Anselme property. That's that's a warning to the cap, the county. So, okay, thanks for your.
My name's Scott Arben. I just uh live right there um off one of where the one of the through roads coming to the Housion Estates subdivision is. Um, obviously, no one likes one hundred and sixteen or one hundred and ten or however many hundred homes since, I mean. In the surrounding, you guys have just approved another two hundred and fifty homes on that street. Um, eighteen hundred, you guys did a quick layover on the patch as far as road work. I mean, less than a year, it's already starting to get its its waves back. I just, who's gonna pay for all this infrastructure? Um, I mean, the idea of putting that many homes. In an area that's already um been approved to put up so many, I just, I'm curious where you're gonna get your your your. The money for that is, it just seems like a poor idea in my estimation. And then as far as this R-one fifteen zoning. They, on your little flyer, it says fifteen thousand square feet for the lots, but to clarify, is it actually fifteen thousand square foot lot? Or you're actually pretty much smaller individual lots and that's fifteen thousand square feet after you take out all the roadway, all the water retention. All those other areas, I mean, huh, seems like uh you're overburdening. An already very lacking infrastructure. And then just in the Housion subdivision, um, right? I was, I guess I would be considered uh one who probably ruined some of the individuals who had already lived on that road, but. All of the way that the county allowed them to cut the road up, dice it up, I mean. There's five feet off what you would normally expect a curb and gutter. That's just big dirt potholes and no one seems to care. And I just, what are we gonna do where if this does move forward and it pushes through into the Housion? That road is super narrow. It's it's almost difficult for two large trucks just to get by one another. And now you're gonna have um one hundred and sixteen more homes. What do they say? An average of three drivers per home making ten trips? I mean, you're talking about sixty, seventy thousand vehicles in at any given moment during one day. Seems like a lot. I would hope that it doesn't go forward the way it's designed. Larger lots seem more appropriate for that type of area, but thank you.
Uh, my name's Jake Larson. I I live um forty-eighty-two west, seventeen hundred south, so I would actually back the development here. And uh follow along with kind of what he said as far as amount of traffic and that. And also some of the other neighbors that live in the Giorgio subdivision, they're still all on an irrigation. And I know I had talked with one of the other neighbors and there's actually irrigation that I believe runs somewhere along some of that property. And one of his concerns was what they were gonna do to make sure that that neighborhood still was getting their irrigation and. Things along those lines. And then basically, I think a lot of our concern was the amount of development in that that area. Just already the the traffic out there from some of these other developments is, I think it's just gonna be a mess. So um would like to see much larger lot sizes. I don't I don't see a reason to. Put that many homes in that that small of an area. So, but I know that one concern, one of the other neighbors had mentioned was the the water. Um, they had talked about something with the water along that that property. So um. I know that he would want me to voice that for him. So besides that, I just, I don't like to see that that small lots back and especially. The neighborhood that that most that neighborhood's acre lots, the Giorgio neighborhood's acre lots. So um just concerned with traffic. So, thank you.
Hi, JB Smith. I live in the Giorgio subdivision. Um, also upon my backyard. Uh, a very large pond. Um, it is, I use it to sprinkle my backyard on the secondary water that I'm now. Um, exactly what Mr. Larson was talking about is who is the development on this particular area? Because the um secondary water that we get actually comes to the. Uh, west side of the green comes down there and there was a lot of issues this past year. There were four different times that we did not get water because of the secondary water, the construction. Either the ditch was dug up or somebody didn't put in a port or whatever the case was. We had numerous issues. When they put in the boxes, they also ended up putting one box in directly in the middle of a uh street. Where now you can't put in a valve, a gate, right in the street. There's no way to adjust that. So I believe he's worked that out now with somebody else, but I'd like to talk to the developer. And make sure that the secondary secondary water that we are deeded uh that we get it. On the timely fashion. I don't know if any of you guys do work with secondary water, but it's kind of cumbersome when you get it once every seven and a half. So it's one o'clock in the morning and then it's one o'clock in the afternoon next week. That makes it diff- difficult at best, but we still like to have our water shares and without the disruption service last time.
Um, Lou Pedersen, I live at forty-one fourteen west, fourteen hundred south, and I'm just concerned about the traffic on fourteen hundred south. And if you're gonna widen the road, widen it on their side, not ours. And also, I've been concerned about the what I've seen on Anselme Acres. Please do not hire DJ Construction. They came over, dug up my lawn on the other side of the road, not part of the subdivision. And I called the county. County needs to be involved in what's going on. They said they would take care of it, did nothing. So maybe in the future, they could actually come out and look at the projects that they approve.
Three minutes. I'll just be quick. Um, if this is a numbers game, I want to make sure my voice is heard as well. But also luckily for some of you guys, we have a community Christmas party tonight. So otherwise, I think there would be a lot more here to voice their opinions as well. But um really just the the number of, I mean, I I understand, I want to live in the country. That's why I live where I do. And so having additional homes and widening roads and having even having curb and gutter, that's just kind of changes the feel of. Where I want to live, but also I worry about the safety of like children and people with the high school out there now. There is a lot of traffic. Um, and if our roads are so narrow, if kids are out in the street, which they're gonna play in the street. It's, that's a concern for traffic being on the roads if the kids are also on the roads and even just the regular car traffic on the roads as well. So that's one of my big concerns too is is just the additional people and just not being able to support the people. And also my feel for wanting to live in the country as well. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
Ma'am, could you state your name for the record?
Yes, I'm Megan Arben. I live in the Giorgio, off the Giorgio, so.
Any further comments on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm ready for a motion to close public hearing.
Chair, I'll make a motion to close public hearing. Got a motion. We've got a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now out of our public hearing. Do we want to discuss or do you want to give the applicant a chance first?
Uh, Dave Malloy, Plain City, uh, I live in Plain City, twenty-two seventy-three north, twenty-eight twenty-five west. Uh, what questions or things would you like me to address?
Are you aware of how the irrigation flows through this property to reach the other?
I am, yep.
Okay, and what are your plans for preserving that access?
So it will be, it doesn't show it on these plans, but it will be piped along our property up until I think it goes up to the west. Um, and from there, I am a little bit aware of what they've done with Anselme, but I think they have the issue resolved at this point. But regardless of what it is, we have to make sure that flow continues to everyone down line.
So in. I mean, I I have a lot of the same concerns these folks have about roadway and and some infrastructure and stuff, but I guess my first one I want to bring up. So in in relation to that, in the staff report and staff recommendation to leave. The the larger chunk to have A-one. Big, I I guess entitlements. I don't agree with that. I I would prefer if they're gonna rezone the whole piece, it all goes to R-one fifteen. And and that stays the way it is. Um. My other concern is, you know, basically you're you're taking the density away from that larger parcel and tying it to the to the rest of that. So I I guess, do we reduce the overall number of lots? That go in there like Felix Felix mentioned to the one-ten instead of the one-sixteen so that some stays with that property for future development? And kind of goes in line with that stub road that staff wants them to put in to tie into that piece?
Yeah, but the only.
You just remove that two acres from the whole proposal.
Well, I think the only way to do it is to remove the two acres because if we rezone the whole thing, they would lose their agricultural a- access. By because of the, you know, the what's allowed in the R zones versus an A zone. And so I think in in either case, if they want to preserve the agricultural nature of the property, they'd have to exclude it from the rezone, in my opinion.
What's your preference?
Uh, as far as I understand, the Martini family doesn't intend to develop this further in the future. But obviously, as we talked about in our work session, that can change. Um. I don't, I don't know anytime soon that it would be. It's kind of an interesting piece too. I don't know. Specifically that if you added a stub road from the south, that it would create lots that are really viable anyways. So, uh, as far as it being R-one fifteen or A-one, I don't, I don't know that it matters too much. Uh, the use isn't gonna change for a really long time.
Well, the concern is that there'd be new restrictions if it goes into the R-one fifteen zone.
That they couldn't do agricultural.
Right.
Uses. Um, yeah, that would be probably a question I'd have to have with the Martini family that currently they don't. I mean, they have grass right now. That's all it is. And some outbuildings and whatnot. I don't think there'll be anything much more than that.
Yeah, I'd just be concerned. I think the the limitations might be more extensive, especially with what kind of.
Yeah, I'd just be concerned, I think the the limitations might be more extensive, especially with what kind of animals can be kept on land, not just. Farming alone, so that might be a problem. Um, yeah, and just, we've had a lot of people talk about the, um. Fourteen hundred south, so I just don't think that's something we can ignore and it. Personally, yeah, I think that I know.
No, I I'm, that's a sticking point for me, if we don't find a way. To at least going to the east to to make that road. I mean, Lou, you probably, Randy, you guys drive it every day, you can't pass two trucks on that road. Without hitting the dirt and to add. You know, another thousand trips a day when this thing's built out and that doesn't include what the other growth that's coming around. Something's got to be done to that road going, going to the east, in my opinion, so and then. Would you be willing to entertain that or, I mean, are we at a at a stopgap here?
Uh, we'll definitely have to look at it, I mean, it's not something originally planned for. So, but we're open to. Seeing what can be done.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Opelato, I guess I just got a question for clarification, what future corridor were you referring to? Oh, okay. Felix, can you address that one?
So these, these are i- in somewhat generalities, I mean, we we like to see the the alignment. Follow as close as possible, but there is some wiggle room, you know, a hundred feet here and there. Uh, we don't like it to veer like crazy outside of the the general plan, but. Uh, yeah, that that's kind of what the what we're aiming for on this one.
I guess if we drove drew a straight line, would go right through the middle of. One of you guys' houses, I I believe.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is there a reason for the change in particular? That you know of?
Not that I know of, I think they just, I mean, it's it's a, it's a, it's an effort for the the engineer to put together. A plan that follows as closely as they can with the the general plan, you know, future roads and streets map.
Right, so I could follow up question, was that road? On this map, was it shown because of how this development is drawn, or was it moved prior to this development being drawn?
I think it was, it was likely moved. Like it was, it was part of this proposal and I'm not sure. Why the, why Mr. Chris Cave decided to do it this way from Reeve and Associates, but. I would assume they 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 followed as closely as they can with the general plan alignment. And then had to veer eastward to avoid those house, those homes, those existing home. But that, does that answer your question, I'm not sure if if I'm answering it properly.
It's just basically on one side or the other, it ended up happening to go unless they went right through them homes. And this is just to orient me, that's the new road going in with Stagecoach that's tying into eighteen hundred south there. At the old Ropelato Dairy.
Yes, that's right.
And it, okay. Thank you, sir. Um, looking over some of these other. Oh, yes.
I may, um, I mean, if if there's, if there's concern about the Ropelatos being unable to. Pursue ag activity, I mean, there is, there is some code that allows them to pursue non-conforming uses. And so that's, in a sense, that's what what they would be, they would be using the property for agricultural. Under a non-conforming use, however, they would not be able to expand their their use, their non-conforming use.
So they're grandfathered in essentially. Okay, thanks Felix.
Uh, sorry, one more question, Felix. Sorry, I'm just looking at this road again, so originally was the road right on the boundary of this property? On the other side of those homes?
I couldn't tell you.
Was it?
I believe it was, let's take a look at.
Keep up the.
I just, I just find it convenient to put the. Road on someone else's property when it goes directly, if if it did line up straight on the edge of the property, I think it needs to stay there.
That actually looks, if you look at the way this was designed, if those red lines are kind of in it. It actually shows the road going.
Right on the edge of that property?
Well, not necessarily. Yeah, but see how.
To go on there.
It's hard to tell, I would almost say it, it changed up here because this road comes. It, this road now goes completely straight, it doesn't curve. Like it's shown down on eighteen hundred south. It actually kind of comes straight through that quarter section line, it doesn't make that bend there.
On the edge of the property.
If if you kept this in in alignment. It would take, it runs right through those homes, so it really doesn't. The the bigger change to this line happened down here in Stagecoach, more so than what we're seeing. Up in closer to this proposal, the way I look at it.
Yeah, I think that's a. Analysis.
And those roads on the plan, they're not exact, um, it's just general, and so it's just intended that we keep that. Um, that road corridor going.
Okay.
As long as there's a pathway through, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Grover, thank you Felix.
Yes, welcome.
To the comment on the curbs, I'd agree with Mr. Opelato, but that's nothing that we have the power to change, that's in the county standards and so. Director Grover, maybe you can make a recommendation to engineering that those little rollback curves, they need a type B. It'd be a lot better off.
I will.
Let's see. We talked about the irrigation system. Um, talked about fourteen hundred. You know, the going down to the smaller lots, I mean, it's. It pains me to see all of this open space going away as well, but unfortunately, it's. You know, with the general plan allows it going down, oh, to the fifteen hundred square foot, so. Director Grover, can you a- address the fifteen hundred square foot question?
Yeah, um, the roads are counted towards the density, um, when we look at those things, so. Um, the lots may appear to be a little bit smaller because the roads are considered, um, we just look at the Grove's acreage.
And they still have the ability to lot average, correct, so there could be some larger and some smaller, but the overall density. Will meet that fifteen hundred.
Correct.
Square or fifteen thousand square foot.
Correct.
And now is that provisional to keeping the um connectivity, is that part of the connectivity incentivized?
It is, but we're looking at that going away, just making that a requirement.
They just have to do it no matter what.
Yeah, because connectivity just makes sense, um, shouldn't be something they get additional.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for, so.
But it did used to be that you had to have a fifteen hundred square foot lot. Exclusive of roads, but we to make the.
No, we always had the the roads were still part of that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
One question, Felix, there's, uh, is this in a, uh? A developer's agreement?
Uh, which which portion?
The whole subdivision, is that going to go under the development?
It is, yes.
And then I I think what we ought to do then. When the motion's made. Is put in there, they get continuous flow. Their irrigation water, and there's multiple ways to accomplish that.
Okay. Good.
And that would be good to have that in there, but usually the culinary water provider, they won't provide. Water until they have the secondary solidified, so if you have that in the development agreement and then we have that. In the water approval letter, it just strengthens that. Does that make sense?
I was in regards to the other subdivision out there where there's got shut off a few times.
I don't know if we could tie that to another subdivision, um, but we could tie it to this subdivision or this development. But to require that for another development, um, and Liam, you may want to chime in on this, but.
I'm just talking about the delivery system.
Maintaining the ditches.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. To that run on that side of the property essentially, but it's what conveys the water to.
Yeah.
That other subdivision.
Yep.
Is that right? Okay.
But that's part of, that's part of the code, I mean, we can put it in here, but by code, they have to maintain, um, flow through.
They they would.
Irrigation systems.
Correct. Sorry, I thought you were talking about the, okay.
Second water away.
Yeah.
Alright. Well, my shirts.
Um, a question that Mr. Ropelato brought up that I think we do have to address is who pays for the road?
That would have to be paid for by the developer, in my opinion.
So, you're not looking at a pioneering agreement, just if they want to develop, they'd have to improve the road to. So, because the infrastructure is not adequate. And it's not part of the plan to make it adequate at this point, unless they put homes, then we don't need.
I'm fine with the pioneering agreement, as long as they don't create a PID on this. And, but I I think we let that, leave that up to the determination of of staff. Both planning and engineering to what what extent they're wanting to improve this, you know, if if they're gonna. If we're going to go to the work of putting in a pioneering agreement, then, you know, they need to build pretty well that half cross section of that. Eighty foot right away all the way across there. You know, if we're going to go to the extent of of that now. If they're just going to add a couple feet of shoulder, I don't know if it's worth putting in the pioneering agreement or not, because you're, you're still going to have to do improvements along that section, so. My opinion on that would be, let's let staff work that out and whatever they feels necessary. They can determine that time, does that work, Director Grover?
Yeah, definitely does, and we'd be working closely with the engineering division on that as well.
Thank you.
We also had a question on which side of the road it was going to go on, I think that's probably going to be up for staff too.
It would make the most sense to keep it on the south side, but.
Right.
I I I agree with you, that's let them make those decisions.
So how would you like to word word that in particular, the at least for fourteen hundred south, that the developers must make the improvements, do we say? That it, they. May enter into a pioneering agreement if.
Yeah, just something along the lines, improvements to fourteen hundred south going to the east. Must be made. In accordance with. County planning and engineering recommendations. Um. And then at that point, I I think it that. Opens the door to where if they want to discuss. Pioneering agreements and stuff like that, that can be worked out at that time, but.
Sure, uh, essentially this developer would put a portion of the road in commiserate with the impact there. Placing on the community, but if they make the, improve the road further, they can get, um. Reimbursement from other developers who come into the area and allow for more development.
Yeah, no, that that's perfect, and just for the record, uh, I want to make sure that the comment from the audience was Randy Ropelato. Um, thank you.
So the developer would be financing the road, but they would be eligible to receive reimbursement for from other developers. For, um, portions of the road.
Alright. Oh, sorry, I shouldn't be allowing public, our public comment portion is closed and Director Grover. Sent me straight, so I apologize for that, we've, we've closed that.
Um, in in the motion, you could recommend. Favor, uh, putting the asphalt or the improvement of the road on the south side, but it still would defer. To engineering and planning. There, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'm good either way, I.
I think it just would depend on what land we have as a right of way and, um.
How that rolls.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right in center.
So how far east you, just to be specific, how far east would you like to go?
Thirty-five hundred west to the arterial, right Felix?
Good, so thirty-five hundred arterial collector. Okay. And and where do we sit as far as rezoning, do we result, rezone everything except? The existing, um, agricultural parcel, I will, I guess it's all existing agricultural parcel, but how do we define that?
I say, I mean, we rezone the, my opinion's, rezone the whole what what the developer's asking for, but. We're we remove. Um, condition number four there.
Then they can deal with that as they'd like when they go through the rest of the process.
Correct.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, we, one other thing we probably ought to get in there is limit that to the amount of acres that they're actually going to use. Taking out these two acres here for dancing.
And I think that would be understood in the, um. Because they wouldn't have any other way to get more density otherwise. Um, oh, one other thought I have, uh, number three, we talked about, um, set aside, they, um. Staff recommended set inside ten percent for affordable housing or attainable housing. I'm concerned about this for this particular housing development, I I do think there are places for it, but I don't think the lot sizes are going to be conducive to. Um, I, even though I know they seem incredibly small to the most people here, they're not small enough. For attainable or affordable housing, and I'm afraid we won't have much of a house there if we do that.
Um, one thing we may think about is when they do the lot averaging, there might be some lots that could meet. Um, those standards, but you know, it's a totally up to you pace.
Well, and that's the thing I like about the way it was writ- wrote here, it's the developer will communicate with, it's not saying that they have to. It's saying they will start that dialogue with them. You know, to to if, because I have to say, when I read that the first time, that was my same concern, big lots, it's not going to work, but. Two lot averaging, if they do get small enough, and and let's let the housing authority.
Same.
Work that out with them.
I'm, I'm not as excited about affordable housing, because I, I mean, sorry, affordable housing, because I feel like it makes. The rest of the housing unaffordable, I'd be okay with attainable housing, um, I just think we have to let the market drive. Drive this a little bit more. Yeah, we can only put so much pressure on the surrounding properties to not be affordable.
Attainable.
Yeah, or attainable, or any of it. But I guess they can, they can dis- discuss that with the Weber Housing Authority, but. I just don't want to have, I don't want to subsidize too heavily the affordable housing, because I think there is. Every level of housing, it needs units.
Alright, any further discussion on the item?
Comment.
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all. Everybody on the commission here feels just like you people. It it may not sound like it, because you can tell it's going to get approved. But. If we stop and think about what made America great. Our founding fathers gave us the right to private ownership. And so. That was fine for seventy-five to a hundred years, then we got the cities involved with zoning and the counties. And they take away some of those rights, but it's for a reason, they got involved for the health, welfare and safety. Of our communities and. If someone to move a chemical plant in there and pump water down in and your wells got. Contaminated, that would be a health problem. So basically what I'm saying is, I'm going to vote for it, but it doesn't mean that I don't understand what you're saying.
Thank you, Commissioner McCormick. Okay, if you guys are ready, nothing else, I'm ready for a motion on that.
I'll make that motion, I move we forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for file ZMA two zero two four dash fourteen. Um, an application to rezone approximately forty acres of land located at approximately forty eighty-three west fourteen hundred south. From the A one zone to the R one fifteen zone as illustrated in exhibit C in our packet. Um. I do this with the recommendations, with some adjustments to the recommendations that are in our packet. Um. I'll I'll read them, but just to make it clear for, um, our recorder, uh, we will be excluding. Um, item number four from the recommendations and adding. Um. Three additional recommendations, so the first recommendation is the standards from the development agreement are included with this recommendation. Uh, the proposed street and pa- number two, the proposed street and pathway layout illustrate in the concept plan. Illustrated in the concept plan is sufficient to meet the connectivity standards of the county code. Um. Number three, the developer will communicate with the Weber Housing Authority to set aside ten percent of the total housing units for affordable housing or attainable housing. Um. And we will skip recommendation number four, um, number five, well. Now, number four, Weber County's outdoor lighting code should be applied to all lighting in the project. Um. Number five. Improvements will be made to fourteen hundred south um to the fifty thirty-five hundred arterial arterial collector. Um. And this must be made in accordance with uh planning and engineering recommendations. Uh, and number six. Um, that the irrigation to surrounding areas is maintained. Or undisturbed through the. Project improvement. Um, uh, this recommendation is made with the same findings that are found in our packet from staff.
All right, I got a motion, yeah, second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, question McCormick.
Aye.
Question Farrow. Question Walker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that passes. All right, next on our agenda. Public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. All right, seeing none, remarks from the planning commissioners.
I just want to say while all of our citizens are leaving, thank you so much for being here, your input helps us. Drive what we can control in the development process and helping us know what issues are in the area that. We can do our best to to mitigate, so I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Thanks. Any other comments? Uncle Jed, you gotta take on for Wayne Wise Words of Wisdom.
Tell you what my dad always said. Nothing stays the same, there's always plenty to do and there's never enough money.
I agree. Director Grover?
I do have a few comments, um, first off, you handled the meeting very well this evening, uh, appreciate how you did that and. Tammy and Felix, you did a great job presenting as well. Um, but one thing I want to let you know, um. Because this last year we've been down, as you know, two planners, um, our minutes have gotten a little behind. Uh, because we're just staff wise.
We gotta have another meeting.
No, 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 not at all, Uncle Jed.
Words out of my mouth, Andrew.
But what what I have done is I went over my budget and I am gonna be contracting out those minutes. Um, so we do that with the Ogden Valley, but we don't do it with Western Weber. But I just want to get things up to speed, we're about three months behind on minutes, so. Um, I I found money to accommodate for that, and we're probably gonna continue to do that. But we want to get up to speed on minutes so that when we have um items going to the legislative body. We at least, we may not have approved minutes, but we have some type of draft minutes to give to them. Because the concern that I have and um a a few of you have as well is. Just making sure that we get the right information that you guys make motions on. To the legislative bodies so they can review it. And I've also chatted with the chair and he's going to try to be online. To some of those legislative meetings, so if there's something by chance that staff doesn't bring up in there, I'll visit with. The chair at that time and have them encourage um the opportunity for the chair. Or whoever that may be on the planning commission to maybe just jump in and say, hey. This is something else that um, you know, we'd like you to be aware of, so. We'll try to have those draft minutes, we'll try to have that um available, we just want to make sure that your voice is properly heard and represented. Um, but I I really feel that the contracted minutes will um be a benefit, we've got an excellent person doing the minutes. Um, she has extensive knowledge in recording and doing minutes, she used to be a recorder. Um, at Ogden City um and Riverdale, so um we're really fortunate to. Have her um helping us with those minutes, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Director, I think it's important um that that we have that extra flavor. In that mix, I think the staff reports are are good, I don't take your own um for a minute, but I think that. That a little bit of of, like I said, just the flavor of what happened in the. In the meeting is important to pass along.
Yeah, um, also too, I just want you to be aware, um. Uh, you guys like us to update you on what happens in county commission meetings, um, so today the county commission. Um, they reviewed the general plan um map. That was dealing with the the Gibson property along the the river area right in through there. And they ended up approving the map, um, and so and that's something that we'll discuss in the work session. Um, right now, but just so you're aware, they they approved that, but they approved it basically how you approved it, subject to. The rezone taking effect, um, there was some discussion in the language that they ended up approving. The text language in the general plan, but you guys hadn't seen that and um. Our legal department has know to let us know that. Even though they approved it that way, and they didn't intend to, I don't believe, it just was. How it ended up happening because they didn't quite fully understand everything happening. And because of state code, it limits their ability to have that item considered. As part of that, so really the only thing that got approved was the map amendment. It was not the text language, we will bring that um back to you um at a public hearing date, so. Do you guys have questions on that?
Thank you, Director Grover. Liam? No wise words of wisdom from Liam tonight, maybe next year. I only get asked that question one more time, Liam, you're disappointing me. I next time, January's meeting, you better have something good, because it's the last time we get asked a question.
I I did want to ask you guys one question, um, the planning commission dinner, would you prefer that to be in January or February, or would you like that later on in the year?
I don't care. Later in the year.
Like.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll adjourn to our work session, but we're going back in there.
Okay, this is the work that I've been. On the zone map amendment. Um, it's a fun reason, started, I think it's off.
Yes, I'm gonna immediately turn over to the developer, so uh, I was saying they are applying for. I haven't guessed much near as new to have a package, uh, because I write what's good, it's a topic, it's uh. Uh, first, what I want, um, but I want them to. Uh, so many, you know, for the community. Sometimes I'll be wrong, but there's anything else. I'm just, so it's a link, um. Yeah, and take it through, you know, but. You know, so that, I I think one question I have, I. We have a lot of information here, we're only going to have a four page review, so I think it's kind of gonna already be a legitimate. Um, in our application, we'll have this this whole thing, we have the development agreement as well. And um. We're happy to have any work section, whatever, it makes a difference, we want to. Accommodate that, so I I don't know the best way to be, you know, saying we use, we have a good collection. You know, how does it work in the application to win, how does it tend to end? Or typically when the application is going, it will be real, kind of you, so it's all through, that's the question. Uh, we always try to, even the first time, except there was a, it probably. So if you're gonna have, don't don't put on the full packet, rezone packet on the screen of the one that the application is providing. But um, it's the key one, not that we want to be more reasonable, but I think going through the things that's something to, we'll have to sort of set up what the what this is. Um, so I'll restart a bit, I'll skip the areas that I don't think are important, so. Um, we'll start at the top of page two. The intent to be good, when regulations to enable pedestrian friendly design. Based on the topic of. The page on the bottom of it. Well, the first page. The intent of the zone regulation to enable pedestrian friendly design. The refined grain network service stage with thorough fairly building types usually generally are limited to these plans and others. With urban design which pressure off of the architecture, allowing building designs. To be simple and appropriate to the local context, which since uh, in service and it's hidden and beautiful and pleasant, spending part of time. Places such as Detroit, Denver, and you have to stand. The most of the military, if the unit is designed as a collection of mixed-use law, one way or another, to be considered as residential, not as a public project. The regulating panel of flexibility and the parameters of using. The neighborhood will be built incrementally all the time, and the design should be flexible to respond to months. At the skeleton, there's various community facilities in a lot of those. The transit zone. We have you like telling me that I don't find. The transit zone, yeah, so it's um. Transit zone, it shows right as it seems for environment, it's got a user place, it's a priority. An intricate network of thoroughfare is designed to support the immediate physical traffic and social connectivity. A range of civic spaces, hard streaming, solar, lighting, and parking spaces, to contribute to that nature. Most commercial cities are getting better than the urban center. A range of housing, ice cream, type of. At its job of walking better, the design of thoroughfare and buildings reinforce their reliance to larger and successful. The buildings in my opinion, it's a complete success, the definition of quality, it's a good. Down below, it's bottom of that kind of stuff, and different people thrive in different cultures, there are those who can never live in urban centers. There are those who are bitter and are world animals, the world's urban transect is divided into six transects. These zones vary by the level of intensity, their physical and their physical safety. Elements to develop by according by the strength that they're designed to protect. Look down below that side. There are different types of. He wanted natural, could be rural, and could be middle, or red, could be general. What, you want a copy list to follow on?
Sorry, no. You want a copy?
I know, but I thought you just gave it to the key.
No, I'm saying another key.
There are these different transects, and and the idea is that they have transitioned in a very busy place. Uh, if you if you business, I've got to be living in the city as well, like, it's it's very, it's a cohesive concept. You, if it's a global concept, you don't see the part of that interest. Um, the bigger concept is part of the overall. Um, in our, in our proposal, there will be four transects. Um. So I think the ones that we're proposing are the C two in the world. This consists of low intensity development that that in this means predominantly natural and the health, so so our C two. In our map, there's active parts. There's a development. C three. Neighborhood as, I think this will grow density residential areas, a base that's more aggressive. That manages not to have a seat, planting a nice electric and set out the elements of the heat. Lots of large and the loads, loads of the fire, which is. And we're having before, the neighborhood general, and it's a mix of, and it's huge, it's primarily human, that's against the urban strategy. And they have wider rebuilding types and giving houses, higher and smaller. Step back in the one that's terrible, three to four, and five, defining the side of. Then, but yeah. So the C three, high C three vector, something to look familiar with, that like, I think there's probably problems there. People, that's, that's our, okay, low density residential. And and it could get up to a higher, a higher, uh, a larger lot size, you know, towards the north. I think we're going to know the, still more and more of a role. Hard that can be minded, but the intent is advocates the north. It's be tested, be treated, and then find out.
When you have, maybe I.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're, we know that, it's, how obvious could it work? Um, with with you how it goes going, and sort of like, just to tell me, probably, if you work there.
But you can do something else, we just work to go with the follow, you're, you're, okay, put on the hood for.
But if you'll see him, I mean, this is so rigid, because you want to. And so I think if it was all by online. What we would actually need to say. Uh, this is what we can drive, uh, like we're a lot of this practice, we didn't suggest that they just, without, just. Uh, the next about the, you know, the given system, and then it's all of this, it's all of this, it's a relationship, so, uh, thank you. So we're, we have to go around it, uh, so they're, I don't know, internal government structure, I will listen to that, but you're entirely doing it. We'll, we'll talk about that. Um, so neighborhood, uh, kind of on the side, it's a fifty-five, it's a fifty-five, it's a fifty-four, it's a fifty-five, you know, it's tight, you know, it's. With wide sidewalks, you're doing C two, C ten, and then it's going to be placed to the side line, and that is the one that's. Special district can sit the area of the building, right, by their function, it's a, it's a, it's a, and now it's not conforming to the, by the, not normally. Um, and then the desertation remnants, the primary reason for requesting the zone team is to provide known and patented design, and the community to that bring magical funds. While accommodating the retirement, and it's the actual, that's why it's. The zoning regulations to present that will allow you to simply, they're not for the community, but you're supposed to, so it's. The often, you know, they're a bit, they're, they're, I think that, you know, one thing that we first, that's all along, it's. It's great, that's, you know, I think it's a lot, you'll see, it's great. Specific, and not just point out where they got approved, but, you know, in your accounting department. That's the kind of stuff that you're just trying to, and I must be wondering about this, if I, if I were against here, and I just. So. Anyway, let's jump to the next one on the map. Let's go to the map of the places, particularly, the business sort of the regulations from them that uh they come up with. Um. You see that uh, the C five is is kind of the, you know, the dark area. Our our idea with that street is that sort of the main street, I mean corridor, where I've been, you know, the location, and it's there. I think, you know, like, you know, if you wanted to make something, you need to plan, and you look at that, you know, for my life, it's still not. Then, maybe along that corridor, like, not any, and, and, and all this means, I got a little bit. But we want that street to still be very, we want that to be. Where, where a lot of them. And if we're gonna have nerves, you know, we need to have a high concentration along that corridor of homes. Other for high management, or something, that you have all, that's not saying that you have homes, and. You know, here's the, there's a lot of, systems, it seems, like, uh. Um, and then if you kind of go away from that, you know, just four on. Uh, so most of it, most of the plan is going to be. You know, more like, uh, sanctity, like, no soul, for our test. Uh. You look at it, it's, 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 it's the way that it is. And then if you look at the profile, it's that's the issue, so on the twelve street. Uh. The reason that it's covered is because it's probably, you know, some type of auto centric, you know, vehicle warning thing. Uh, the reason why it's covered is because it's probably, you know, some type of auto centric, you know, vehicle warning thing. If you find it's hot, uh, the water's hot, and then the parkway, you got the area, the north side, it could be a park. We, we think, we think Allen and what, so what? We want to be. Formate or develop. Um, any questions of the map, uh, to bring out the world, P, 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 the world then, again, that is going to be part. So what, the difference between if you look at the map which you're sitting here. Why we don't have C nine is because C one we don't have. C three, we can improve even if it's. So we're saying everything we can do to protect, we can sell, or we're not into it, or. Uh, some of the things we also, um, as it relates to the setup, the original setup, the test, if it's. We engage with some, like, so we'll come back to that. What we will, um, we would like to do, and it's part of the, like, the fun, I think, just so that you guys understand what our. One, the most important thing is, I think, we're not. So what I said is, we're way more interested in that, than probably. And two, what we think is, what was really focused last, and then certainly over time, but we have one shot at being. And we hope to, that's why, that's why it was kind of saying, we don't want to just really focus. Forward, you guys, but we're relying. And uh we have some language that, that we need to understand that. What we feel like is about, and we think that, is that narrow, I want to get forward, it's, it's, they're going to be hiding their, their. And these um, uh, these, uh, these, uh, and again, I think the biggest thing is, right now, it's seeming to come out after. Well, I think the reason is, I don't know, you're gonna do a study, but you're gonna tell us. What, what, what are that three hundred streets? If this means there's a lot, I mean, I don't disagree, there are areas of three hundred streets, probably less than three, there are probably areas more than three hundred streets. There's gotta be three hundred, but they saw the areas of well, still, we all. Yeah, and I think for us, that, that's what we're hoping to get, by saying more of our opinions, and also, if we have a six. If they say, you know, land kind of in the area of. We're, we're concerned that that's, that's, if, if our study comes back and says, five lines, we have. Right, that, that, that's what I'm, we're not planning, I, you just name the plan, safety careful. The study. And from a three inch, uh, to a five inch, to a two inch, and this having this block where it's. All right.
So remind me, how many units in general are you going to want?
So what were, like, what were going to propose is, how many six units in a year?
So, I, how many?
Four, five. Yeah, three thousand.
Five, not the last six, because. No.
Five hundred and five, five hundred.
Five meters, I have to have, like, now.
And it's, and you know. Um, that number. Which is. Uh, and then, um, some of the, um, and the people. Uh, the other thing was, those market failures, uh, those averages, like, depending on the type of device. You have, one of the things that I, you know, appreciated, finally, for this, well, if you give us, you know. We'll give you more density, you'll be very able to do it, and open those, that, and our response is. We don't want to gap out from the, we want to. You know, if we had a percentage of everything. And so, I don't know, I don't think there's any. But what we will do is we'll make sure it's important. We're not going.
Yes, I'm just asking, so the, maybe some of that, we think this probably is like a community here, like, so we're doing the investment. So that the sixteen, you know, that are, that is in the past, it's. So, you know, parts, maybe related to three parts, I don't know, you think, even for the. The, the civic building site, is that on the, uh, the.
So we, we don't know what that's going to be yet, we think that we're in, we don't have civic buildings. Um, because there is, right now, in the context of, so different types of buildings, I'm. Cool.
Yeah, this means, this means, um, people have been, for, if we have a lot of, maybe it's more, we can go over.
And I.
That would be having.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and I think for us, the most important, we want to, like, we mentioned. What the school is like, how it. What you're saying, uh, what we're worried about is, like, your school, they're, they're probably, like, they develop. You know, standards that they do all over the town, they would go. I mean, it's hard, but what I'm saying, the, the type of design, how it interacts with the street, being part of, related to part of. How do we?
I think, like, most of their willing, the students, the students, the reasons they don't have anything to do with, they want to sign up. And so, the more you're willing, you know. If you count my family, I would say. From the board, I'll say, all right, no, maybe not.
Yeah, no, we.
I just sort of leave that conversation to you with the school, um, but I think that would be about you, yeah.
Yeah, and you're talking about, like, that, which we expect to be, that having a school is, in the.
People, yeah, biometric knowledge, the school.
Yeah, well, one of the negatives of the. In the, 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 what you want to make. Okay, the next thing I want to hear about is how this, uh, how this is. If you have, you have a.
Uh, yes.
All right, I'm going with the number three on this. Um, I think for show number four, you know, I'll let you. So it's not architecture, the, the idea around that is that, uh, case, doesn't divide. Number four. So the idea here is, the rigidity of the story is. And uh, the idea is that we, we develop, and by developing, the kind of effect goes as people as the urban. The kind of effect provides the last, the rest, the rest of the. Specifically, all forms of improvement is enabled to study and use by the kind of. It can prove defiance with the intent of designing a city. To grant warrants, when necessary, hopefully follow a mediation into a process, or not. For what? The kind of text of the process by developers, not be a person or someone, it's meant to be more than, like, you know, that's the time. Not that basically, you know, I just. Designers, you're going to have to know that it's, it's, it's neighborhood, and it's like this, right, and that, or is it all going to be inspired? It is really a building for me, by the county, in place that it only do, do this thing, anything. I'm not sure how this happened. But what we're saying, we don't want all, every time, you know, build something that's a connection to the identity. Because the identity is the, the.
We don't have very few, I mean, I think.
This week, we don't see a lot of. Some residential, if someone is going to go, they need to go five or seven months on the. Yeah, for our. Yeah, there's some people in ours, but we don't enforce the years, because some people would look, if you guys do that enforcement. And maybe what we do is, is, is that, or if it's like, or if it's, or personally, if you see that something, it's a product, it doesn't have that. It's uh, uh, well, I'm just saying, I'm just going to go down, and they were going out, but, but it'd be better for all of us. And we don't, like, know that if they, if they're five, it's, it would be a very hard thing. Well, we, we care, we care, we want. They, they think, they think, and all of the things. I think that, anyway, with that. All this money is in the, in the, 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 the. So they change on going with. So one of the things that I would strike at is, is because they're going to be subject of this one, uh. Uh, one of the examples is to be, uh, part of their development, or maybe it's part of their redevelopment, whatever it is. Uh, either, the creation of that fifteen, uh, government, government, so to add. Um, obviously, that we're supposed to do some internal challenges, so for whatever reason, uh, just as we're on to the project. Um, it's pretty clear, you know, that, they got, uh, all of them, they're the ones that are very, very, very. Um, it's kind of obvious, I mean, you put it, kind of type of line of words, but we all know that, kind of twenty two B, and we don't want to put this kind of a word in. Um, so what we're looking at, we got, make the, some government structures, where, everything that's wrong to me, definitely. Yeah, you know, this is, the second thing you know, is like, well, the value is, is, you know. A brief, like, uh, if you go to number three, warrant mediates, the warrant, how they define it, is warrant, but something that is. Kind of test, and maybe mediation is something that they have to prove, but it has to be. It's about. So, fail. But I obviously, there are two types of variations for zoning regulations. Warrant mediates, defined as, but warrant is a ruling that was kind of a practice that is not consistent with the specific provision of zoning. But which is justified by the. Warrant is granted by the, the one may be granted for each provision of zoning regulations, uh, not by the other, in the question of. Something like that, yeah, so similar to what I'm saying, or. So one thing that would probably be helpful, if you go through and figure out what things can be done with a warrant. And if you don't like, you know, if you make them. The mediation, the mediation is a rule that would permit a practice that is not consistent with the specific provision. The intent to be done in our day is to, mediation was granted by the board of the general people in public. The age of all, the time, that the best they could be using, a letter, starting to be used, so you could maybe define three years. And the event that a warrant, similar to the same.
So the idea is, you want the, to act as a song, I know. The, the thing, before I go to the, so they, you're ready to, you know, tell a plan, so I understand.
Well, thank you, um, thank you, and back up what I want to have, they're going, you know, uh, position for my station by the. Uh, which allows, uh, really, the, 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 uh, to make, uh, much easier on how the, uh, things to be acquired. But it's going to be right on the, 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 thoughtful, right, well, which, for the, uh, reasonable, the. It's going to, it's going to, you know, it's, it's. So, yeah, we're going to reason, that's the, that's the, that's what I'm, uh, was, uh, I found, that's just like the same way. We want to. Um. My, well, my, only thought on this is for, sort of, kind of. Just different members. That's what everybody, it makes sense, but, I don't like one, it's, it's because I'm graphic, I don't, I don't know. What, what, what were you saying? Marketing, yeah, the marketing within, the weak, weakened, a little marketing, and, uh. I don't, I don't think it connects, you're feeling, it's. Yeah, unless, of course, you were the one who, uh, you know, the, 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 like, like, the, 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 the. Unless, of course, they, yes, your own internal systems, evidence, or anything like this, above or beyond that, maybe you go bigger. Kind of like the big one of those, uh, that's the board, uh, that's the, the, so, maybe all that stuff is, they can only tell. Always have the. Yeah, and, and I think the biggest thing, you know, I thought it, well, I knew it, that's, that's, fine. Well, we'll, we'll have. Um, let's see, so let's, we can, uh, we can. Kind of, it's a deal, so the, 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 in, in, in my mind, and I knew, situation would be that the. Kind of, that is accountable to, kind of, to, 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 but they are accountable to, 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 to. You know, maybe we can work it over to, 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 that, gives a, maybe, like, a, a positive feedback. For the developer, he's, uh, uh, architect, maybe wouldn't, but wouldn't, you know, you can tell more.
If that would be, I'm sorry, I'm taking, so there is, uh. Totally, totally agree, I think that it would be best to do, if you're second one on, but just the.
But, but, that's what, that's what, that's what, it is, except for. And very, you know, it's like, you're.
Maybe, 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 if you kind of, you can, but it's a lot, make lots of difference, out of it, really, there. It's all very.
But you're going to do one of that power, anyway, then what the hell?
Well, that's my, it's probably like, so, um, maybe, so, we can, just like the aspect to.
I think, I think the biggest, if we don't, if you, if you know, and I really think, you find out that we, you know, you're giving us, we need. Hundred, so we have to do something. What's concerned me more, more than, you know, this is not really, it's like, just putting in test of what's going on, it's large drive. And large drive away from what you intend, other people can do in full respect. So that's what, that's what we're going to start running, anyway, yeah. Because things are going to start being proposed in those areas that are going away from what is originally in terms of. And I think that, if you read the document, it's real. You, you can't, I mean, resolve that, the, that's not. But if you go to the. Yeah, I mean, my thing is, uh. Uh, it's, uh, I mean, it's, 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 because, uh. So, I, I'm not. I don't mind the law, so, I don't mind. You know, it's really, yeah, it's, yeah, it's like, you know, it's all. Sure, we're, we're open to, I think, I think the reason is, man, the. We, especially, that would, that would be very. I go, you can tell. Well, I, I won't, I, I won't say, but what, what I've learned in some of these, is, they want to discourage. Like, that's, that's the intent, but it isn't, it didn't come to this, to that, right? And I, I'm, I'm not arguing, but I think, part of it, we're used to, man, we just want. We want to go, and so.
So I'll go the long way to the light. Well, everything's a long way to the light, that's the whole point.
That is, it is.
Then I think when he said that, everybody was, oh, I'd rather walk than have to, like, navigate hard enough. For us, it's like, why would you need that?
Remember, you kind of worked there, it was a living.
I, I think really, that's, uh, I've thought on this subject, like, with the, uh, western side of the, the, still struggling a little bit with, like, three blocks, despite, I mean, they're, they are, so, okay, well, what if we got, we're going to see five, it's, one of the reasons why they're struggling three blocks, right, is they want to serve, they want to have certain leaders and sort of guys, and then, uh, they wouldn't tend to be bringing them on the side. I would only be open with that if we, uh, if topless, every four hundred feet, that was the block, but what we're agreeing on, what we're, what we're saying there, on the other side of, we didn't make this back, we're saying that we're going to park around a very large, uh, for those who need, you know, it is possible for, for, it might be okay, but maybe, yeah, and, and I will say, I don't think it's, it's not, it's not, because you're, you're knowing this really for a team.
The concern I have is that everyone's going to be driving in and out of the street like, so I'll be able to walk the street, but it's going to be, I don't know, that way, so, I don't want to have to bring the, out of the street, and so, it's like, I know what you're talking about, the, the, I'm concerned that we don't have a way to get in and out of the street, because they're going to need to get in and out of the street, and it's going to be, it's, it's, you know, it's.
Yeah, and if you look at, if you look at the, um, no, I, 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 I guess, I, I know, that, you know, I'm not, the, one thing, if you can remind me, say, now, we're talking about, there's a question here without six blocks, uh, one of the things that we talked about early on, is that, hey, our three blocks, there's one of the, that's twenty percent that's, these are, that's, like, all that, I think, those, that's, there's no way to say, six blocks without that.
Right.
The other cell, we're thinking, they're, they're, maybe that's, that's all they have is, yeah, of course, we didn't, we didn't say, like, the, the, and, 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 but, we think that we, well, there are no holes, there are lots of ways to, you know, they get all materials, and then there's, so.
If one's not falling over, it's not very.
Yeah, that's fine. I, we, we can talk about.
I understand narrow, I understand so, we.
Well, yeah, and if there is a fact being, you're.
It's fine, but not that, that, uh, which is, that, that, they're, they're, they're not, it's not, it's, that, um, many, two, or three, it's like, and so, I'm moving over to a, that we were talking about, they, they, when, 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 they were, like, by the way, they're not, it's, it's allowed to, uh, they go, uh, here and do it, and then you go on the left, it's.
And, and that, and that, I think, is the idea for yourself. That's a little much, I'm not happy for that.
Okay, well, there is not, I hope people think when Lala, and, like, we want people to, not, not, there are, there's plenty of ways, like, of getting them out of it, you know, we want that to be a good thing, but we also want to, like, I know, it's.
Well, if there are large times we don't need to be.
Yes.
And so, thank you for there is.
And, 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 and so important to have staff, and, and, uh, yes, you want. Uh, I think the last one, we have a, we have, if someone would ask, say, you know, you have something to.
I was gonna say, I was gonna go, I was gonna point to this, this, and this, map, or, it's, we're dependent, you know, we'll have to, we can talk to what, you know, what areas, the, the areas of those groups are not, there is not, I think, the body of, like, I mean, that's pretty, I think, stuff, it's, India, this is what, so.
Not on the whole, too, right, so, so.
Yeah, 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 I don't know, I mean, you know, you have our, if they have their way, you're not going to, uh, the last thing was just the part, that, I think.
Yeah, I think that's.
So just to be able to have what we're proposing, obviously, this setback along the river is not the necessary setback, because that's, I think, that's, you know, be modified, I think, yeah, what we're hoping to do, uh, and then, we just, we, we, uh, different pocket products, or, like, there's the, 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 and, and, so, again, we're continuing to learn from, we have, and, 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 again, obviously, the, the, for some of the time, uh, if you're, if you're, it's, it's.
Okay.
Oh, so.
This year, obviously, you know, the, the, I, 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 I.
Right, yeah, that's.
We just want to overwhelm, you know, like, thirty-one, thirty.
Thank you. If you, if you look at the area, if you look at the area from that along the, you know, you have, you have a plaza, the square, the green, those are the ideas that have, that, and then, of course, so, you know, people see, if the market's like, wow, we want to be in, all the way through, we love it, and the people, like, we're touring that, we, we, we don't, we don't know if we, if we got lost, that we, you know, it's, it's, it's.
But if you bring it up to where the people are, they won't be affected. People don't like trucks, and we're all like.
Yeah. It's, you know, part, when, when you're, back out, you see, uh, what happens, you know, that, 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 that.
Yep, I was laying that stuff, I don't, a hundred years ago, that was it.
Is there anything that you either wanted to do, look at this process, uh?
I, I like that, yeah.
I don't know how far you're going with that, the word I've been opening up, the thing that everyone's been trying to say, uh, and then we'll probably have another one to, uh, you know, it's, how we did this, is, is, you know, having a military, and then, you know, it's like, when do we show that, you know, the, 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 if the general plan amendment, if you look at that, you think, you're, so, uh, so, we plan on, so, there's kind of a few things that we, uh, we, there's several maybe, there's a, like, for him, uh, uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's. I don't know, I mean, I, 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 I am, I am sympathetic to what I, and, and, they, 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 and it's going to be good, because all, if you have a thousand years, you, and you're, you know, you know, you know, that's what I always thought, it was a, and that's a lot what it's, like, not, nobody wants to be a, it's important, I think, they're, 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 when, 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 yeah, I think, definitely, it's unfortunate, but, otherwise, we just, we, 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 yeah, we'll, uh, we'll be, we'll, 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 we'll,
Well, I feel about you and Claire, but I'm gonna take a hint on that.
Then, uh, what's that, most, most, I mean, like, the, 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 the.
Would you, while we have a, please, kind of, last, first, from a, we know, what is your, your, what, 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 are you doing, I don't know, for, for, over, are you going to, like, lay down, what, what are they looking for, the?
It has to be a massive, like, development over the, in order to get some of the things that you want in here, so, the way it's gonna work, right, started, the way that, uh, we're going to, if you get along, we can, we're on, some, to, 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 we couldn't do that, um, for this, um, about some work for, uh, specifically, in, 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 uh, uh, it would take, uh, uh, some, some, like, maybe, through, through, uh, de-creators, there's, there's, you write on it, and so, but, you know, it's, 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 uh, and, it's, 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 kind of, you guys, it's, 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 uh, it's, 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 it's,
But, I like an idea, because the master's development overlay does not lead to, for this, it raises a much smaller scale, and you really have to, for the community, and so I can find, a, 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 so, yeah, it might work a little bit better.
Look at the difference, we got, nobody knows what they, this is a lot different than what they're getting, you know, they're coming, they're buying, so, if there's a better way to do it, like, that's, like, the, I think, that's the route we go, which then puts more on them, to do what I say, to, to, our, 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 I'm gonna give them the, 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 Um, no, I think, to be honest with you, we just, basically, start, uh, a little bit more, and, 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 you know, school and, so, that, so, that, now, we can, so, that's going to, and, 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 well, the food you have, is, 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 is,
Hey.
I would do, I would, 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 I thought we did away with that, you know, it's, uh, not, yeah, it's, 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 it's still in the, it's, it's, I've done even though, right, but what have we, in fact, in the last five years? We survive very well, but, 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 I guess, I guess, my, my question is, would I, would I, five, and zero five, um, important, and you all want to, you know, without work, I don't, we have to do that, it's, I would think as well, about, if we, if, 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 if,[1396.14]